I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting here in North Las Vegas. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comments. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards. Nice young lady over there in front has the blue cards if you need them. And bring them to the podium rail or give them back to her. Please give the card to the city clerk afterwards if not. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes, please, and try to avoid any repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada open meeting law?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have, from the beginning of the meeting, we're going to have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Pastor Elvin Hayes Jr. from the Champion Center of Las Vegas. And following that, Captain Miller will do the Pledge of Allegiance for us. So if mine's pleased standing.
Let us pray. Lord, we are so grateful and so thankful to you today. Lord, we just remember your word that tells us in Romans, Chapter 12, that all authority is established by you. So, Lord, each and every single person that's here, each councilman, each representative, they are your representatives. So, Father, I just pray your grace, your mercy, over their lives. I just pray your love and your truth over their lives. And, Lord, I just pray, just a blessing over the city of North Las Vegas. We just are so excited at what you're doing here, Lord, and what you're gonna do. So, Lord, continue to use these awesome instruments for your glory and your praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We appreciate that, and thank you, Captain Miller. Okay, the next item over here is our council items, and we'll start with my colleague on my left, Councilman Barone.
Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Hey, now is the time of year where we start to have lots of activities out in the community. So some of these you'll find on my councilman newsletter. And of course, I want to remind everybody who's watching, please look out. Sign up for our council newsletters because we have lots of great information that's going out there. Everything from, hey, you know, well, you'll see. One thing I definitely will be putting out here, our good friends at NHSSN will be doing a spring cleaning, Arrowhead Acres Spring Cleaning, which will be on Saturday, March 26th. And they're providing free dumpsters to place items in, in, of course, our neighborhood over here at Arrowhead Acres. For more information, look at my newsletter here. I'm gonna put it on there. And then I'm gonna actually wind up actually having something in common now with our city manager, who, of course, is actually, besides being our city manager, he's also an esteemed professor. He's a teacher at the college levels. So I've been invited by our library district, the North Las Vegas Library, to actually have, to lead a scholarly discussion on Senator Chavez's A Life, A Legacy on March 29th in Conference Room 937, 938 upstairs. That's the big one. The Falcon Room, as I call it, overlooking north. So please come by, March 29th, although I don't have the tie, but I'm sure it'll be posted somewhere here. Hey, I'm very happy that our North Las Vegas Fire Department, they're able to get out several thousand COVID quick home test kits to community partners, like the Centro Cristiano El Shaddai Church and Make the Road Nevada. The idea is to get them out in the hands of people, so I wanted to definitely put a nice big kudos out here to our fire department for getting those test kits, making them available. Our police department, I see some of our city's finances are here. The North Las Vegas Ninth, the Ninth Hispanic Citizens Academy will have its grand opening night on, maybe not grand opening, just the opening night, March 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I do believe it'll be also upstairs on the fifth floor. So if you haven't had a chance to sign up for it, I think there's still some time. Right next to us over here, the Small Business Connector's Jump Start 2022 will take place on March 30th at 9:00 a.m. Whether you're at the initial stage or have an established business and want to find out what resources are available to you, our North Las Vegas Small Business Connector can help you. So get out to your friends, and if you're thinking about opening up a business, please come on by. We're ready to help you out on that one. And I know there's another flyer here that I'm supposed to share, and I already forgot where it's at. I'll figure it out or not. Well, you know, I'll go to the last thing here. Hey, I'm very happy. I've never done this before. I've gone ahead and joined a community engagement for adults. I've joined the Elks Lodge, the North Las Vegas BPOE Elks Lodge, and I'll be installed in a couple of weeks. I can't wait to see how it goes. I guess I have to go through initiation. I'm not sure what that means, but, you know, I'm sure it will not involve paddles and getting masked up. I'm sure it's gonna be something very civil. I can't wait, and once I go through, I'll share that with you, maybe on my newsletter or whatever. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilman Barone. You know, I appreciate you joining the Elks Club over there. Maybe you are, because that's in your ward?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you may want to consider, every year, they have a dinner, of course. They invite us to go there, and they recognize our police officers and our firefighters. I think they're the only organization that does that for us.
Yeah, I think they are. Actually, what inspired me, we have, there's a lady in our community, she and her husband, for an entire married lives, that's like almost 50 years worth of life here, they were actually members, Carolyn Pickrell and her husband, and that's what inspired me to be part of the Elks Lodge. So hopefully, she's recovering. She got out of the hospital. So if you're listening, Ms. Pickrell, I'll come by your house with the dogs sometime later on this week.
Thank you. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Churchill. I had the opportunity yesterday to travel all the way to Henderson for a Chamber of Commerce networking event called Made in Nevada. It was really insightful. The reason I went is to look for opportunities for my economic development team here in North Las Vegas, and I have some nuggets to share. No, it was a great, it was a great event, great networking. You see what's going on in our region, but also, one of the issues that they discussed was businesses coming in, is having talent that matches the needs of the organization. And I know that we have honed in on that here in North Las Vegas and continue to attract great businesses here. Secondly, last evening, I had the privilege of being a panelist on a housing roundtable discussion sponsored by Senator Dina Neal, who represents a large chunk of North Las Vegas, to talk about housing issues in our community, and that was a great experience. And then lastly, on March 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00, Deer Springs Park, right next door to Goins Elementary School, having another park cleanup. It's gonna be a beautiful day to help spruce up a park. And you can see this flyer here that's on my newsletter. You could scan that little magical QR code and register very easily. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Barone, you have one more thing that you would like to mention?
Yeah, this one's on my newsletter, but I think it's coming up quick here. Saturday, March 19th, well, I guess, is that this Saturday? Oh, my gosh. This month is just like rolling by. Of course, that's not the one that, that's not what it is here. There's gonna be a pop-up here at Cristo Rey St. Vitae, just down the street here, actually right down the street here or right across the street from the Elks Lodge, there's gonna be a Pop-Up and Give mobile market. It'll be, it says here, join our Pop-Up and Give mobile food market. There are no requirements. You do not have to be enrolled in the school to give groceries, to receive groceries. So it's another food giveaway. Distribution begins at 9:00 a.m. And again, the information's on my newsletter. Thank you very much. I thought that was still, there's still some food insecurity that we have to address. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goins-Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This morning, actually, Mayor Protem and I attended the 23rd Annual Elizondo Honor Day, held at Elizondo Elementary School to honor one of our fallen heroes, Raoul P. Elizondo. And it's always an honor to go to that ceremony and that they have continued that tradition for 23 years now. And even those kids that are just new to the school can learn a lot about heroism, courage, respect, and just how to treat people in the community and be great citizens one day when they grow up. Also, this Saturday, congratulations to our fire department personnel that will be honored at their annual fire award ceremony, and they will be celebrating and recognizing promotions and awards within the department, as well as exceptional services performed by the fire personnel in the community. And that will be held this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the Fire Station 52 that's on Los C. Road. So congratulations to all of those who will be recognized and honored. And as you walk into our chambers, you see this beautiful artwork hanging in our stone soup gallery. And yesterday, I had the pleasure of talking with sixth and seventh grade students from our Civica Charter School right across the street about the person that they drew, maybe drew is not the right word, but they were assigned a prominent African-American figure, and we just had a great discussion on who they chose and why they chose, and the various mediums that they used to paint their portraits of the people that they chose. So thank you to Civica for letting the students walk across over to our city hall, and we just went on a very short tour and brought them in here to see the chambers. They were really excited. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to mention as well, as the Councilwoman stated, we both had an opportunity today to attend the Raoul Elizondo Day. This is the 23rd year. It's amazing. But, you know, and the choir of youngsters over there, they were really amazing. The next generation, we shouldn't be concerned. We're in good hands. But I was reading the brochure that we had, and all the years that I've gone there, and often as I read it, you know, I really didn't realize what a short life this young man had. He joined the force in '92, was, he received an award in '94, and in '95, he lost his life. So, you know, I think one thing that we should be aware of is that no one is guaranteed any time on this planet. He served his city honorably and gave his life honorably. So as I mentioned, you know, when we see our police officers out there, and mention that particularly for our young children there, just the way we say thank you for your service to our veterans and our military, we should recognize our police officers for their service because they know best that there's no guarantee that at the end of the day, they're gonna be going back home to see their family. So, but we appreciate all that they do for us because they give the sense of quality of life and safety in our community over there. So, and again, I want to mention our amazing North Las Vegas Fire Department. They had reached out to Sun City on those COVID test kits for at home, and they delivered 1,500 test kits up there for our seniors, and we appreciate them doing that. Captain Anderson was very receptive to that, and the board and the residents up there were very, very appreciative. I plan on being, chief, I plan on being at the station. Are you planning on having pancakes? That, no, okay. Well, let me think about it then, all right? More than likely, I'll show up. Last but not least, our volunteers in police service program. It's been kind of stumbling around for a while, a little bit due to COVID and stuff like that, but we've just made some changes thanks to our Police Command, Sally back there, and I was briefed on it, and I think we have some amazing changes coming to that program. We finally got a coordinator that's specific to that group. I know that the group is very, very happy about it, looking forward to it, and I think that, I know, I know for a fact that that program's gonna be second to none to anybody here in Valley, and that includes Metro. So thank you so much for all your hard work, city manager, for your support in that as well. I think that's it for me right now. Councilman Barone, anything else? Did you forget anything else? Make like I didn't ask that.
Well, I do suffer from CRS, but I won't go into details about that.
We're gonna go into the next public forum, moving on to the city council's public forum. This time, it's set aside to comment on posted agenda items only, so if you want to speak on any items on today's agenda, now is the time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or is anybody on the phone?
No, sir, there is not.
Okay. Thank you so much. Moving on to our agenda.
Item one, approved city council regular meeting agenda of March 16th, 2022, mayor and council. Item number 12 on the consent agenda needs to be removed from the consent agenda, is placed on the business portion of the agenda. And with that change, it's our recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do I have a motion on the council here to approve it as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Mayor Lee is absent, so we'll handle it, four of us. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items number two through 11. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as just amended.
Thank you, City Manager. I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Moving on to business.
Mayor and council, since item 12 is the city attorney's office and she's not here, just messing with her, she's back there, she's dodging, so please ask her bunches of questions. But no, item 12 is passing the adopt resolution number 2689, a resolution of the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, confirming the city attorney's authority as the chief legal officer to pursue judicial or administrative proceedings on behalf of the city pursuant to sections 3.050 of the North Las Vegas City Charter.
Madam City Attorney, are you going to explain that to us?
Yes, so this is really just to confirm what the process that we already go through when we proceed with any kind of litigation or any administrative proceedings. This is really to memorialize some changes in the law, both at Nevada Supreme Court level as well as in the Nevada legislature regarding open meeting law. And so we just want to make sure it's clear on the record that we have the authority, or you've bestowed the authority, to the city attorney's office to proceed with judicial and administrative matters.
Thank you, Michaela. So this is an item that we'll be voting on. So do I have a motion on council here to adopt that?
Move for approval to pass an adopt resolution 2689.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the view from back there is pretty good.
Well, the further away you get from us, the better we look.
I liked it back there, too, in the day, not because you guys aren't really hot, but I just liked it back there.
Item number 13, received presentation by Roanne Trenna, Region 1 Superintendent, regarding the quarterly report of the Clark County School District.
Thank you, Roanne, for coming here tonight.
Hi there. Good evening. All right. And then my clicker. Got it? Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Thank you so much for inviting me here tonight, Roanne Trenna, Region 1 Superintendent, from the Clark County School District. Tonight, we're gonna be discussing the quarterly update, which includes strategic budgets and summer learning opportunities. All righty. School budgets recently submitted, actually, schools recently submitted strategic budgets for the upcoming school year under Nevada revised statutes, NRS 388G. Principals developed a school plan of operation with the advice and assistance of the school organizational team, we call it the SOT, and held public meetings to present the plan of operation. Regarding summer learning opportunities, as you all know, students in the Clark County School District began 21-22 school year with unfinished learning. Extended learning opportunities are essential and will be provided for all pre-K through grade 12 students to provide additional time to accelerate learning, engage with peers, adult educators, and improve social, emotional well-being. All schools will be provided summer acceleration, five days a week for six hours. The instructional day will be created to support students' learning and social, emotional well-being. Schools will offer face-to-face instruction, opportunities to accelerate students' learning, provide interventions and services for social, emotional support, facilitate study centers, and offer extracurricular activities for students. Also, as a component of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, specifically Section 300.106, extended school year services will be provided, and this will provide instruction for students with disabilities to retain learning over the summer break. Special education-related services will be provided for students with disabilities as articulated in each student's individualized education program. Approximately eight high schools geographically located throughout the district will host secondary summer school for middle school and high school students throughout the district for credit retrieval options and for first-time course enrollment for high school students. And then finally, Nevada Learning Academy, our online school, will provide credit retrieval options for middle school and high school students throughout the district. NVLA will continue to offer first-time course enrollment for middle and high school students throughout the district, and summer acceleration will also be provided at NVLA for students attending NVLA during the 22-23 school year. So with that, that concludes my presentation, but before I close that out, I would like to thank you so much for the two lunch and learns that we were able to gather the principals in North Las Vegas. I know that meant a lot to them. That was the first time we were able to gather face-to-face and actually enjoy a meal together after our pause and all the COVID restrictions. So I just want to thank you for that time. It was very meaningful, and thank you so much for investing in us.
Well, we appreciate that. I know I enjoyed the lunch and learn. Matter of fact, I learned quite a bit from that meeting with the principals, and we appreciate all that you do. I'm sure we have some questions up here from council for you, based on your presentation. Councilwoman Goins-Brown?
The eight schools, do you have those identified?
I don't have those listed yet. All that is gonna be coming out. I think Rancho is one, right? Yay!
You got a question, too?
We're finalizing those school sites, so. I get those to you. Okay.
Councilman Barone?
Yeah, I just want to say, yeah, I think the lunch and learn came out great. I think it's already begun to pay dividends because I guess there's some traffic issues over here on Cary with our school, Fay Heron, and they're getting together here with Seraphin Calvo, who'll be coordinating with our patrol officers to see what we can do to mitigate some traffic issues over there. So I'm really happy that, and that's part of what we wanted to do. We're hoping, we want to be a partner. We want to work with you in everything that we can do to help out. I do, I do have a couple of quick questions. So I guess, there's now been, there's, I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna work, but I guess now the district might be able to hire people who don't have a full college degree, but might be able to help out with the high school. What can you tell us about that program? And will it actually get us a few more people, a few more bodies who can help out?
Well, definitely, that's the hope. As you know, there's a nationwide shortage in all districts across the nation, so that's our hope, that by having subs come in with a high school diploma, that that's gonna help us fill some gaps. So we won't know until it happens, until we try it.
Any initial details on that?
I do not have any.
I was thinking, one of my subs actually is a young woman named Lanay Hall. She was one of my students a few years ago. She says that I inspired her to be a history teacher. I don't know, she must have been thinking of a different history teacher, I'm sure. But she's actually my sub, and she's actually going through, she hasn't got her bachelor's degree, but she's kind of, she'll be done in about a year or so. So if it's something like that, someone who's gonna be a teacher, or they're a professional like in, you know, in the know, I think that'd be very, very effective.
We've got some more incentives coming along the way that I'm not at liberty to share yet until it goes through the board, but we're very excited and hopeful that some more incentives can help attract more educators.
Oh, yeah, in her case, of course, you know, she's, she's working her way through school, you know, she's got a couple of scholarships here and there, but if, definitely, if we could pay her enough to where she could afford to be, you know, one of our teachers, that'd be great. And then also, we have her before she takes off to another district, you know? It would suck to go ahead and train her up and let her go to Reno or something, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that would really suck. I do have one-
I'm writing that down.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. I do appreciate that. I do have a functional question. Here, a few weeks ago, it was very unfortunate that we've had a small rash of overdoses with opioids at the different schools. I know this is a really tough one, and we're talking about policy here, and you may not want to share that, but I think at Rancho, I know our nurse has one Narcan, and I know our brother officers here from North Las Vegas, that our school district officers also carry Narcan each.
Yep.
But, you know, as a teacher, sometimes, I've actually been where you try to call the office right now because you have something going on, and you don't get a hold, and this happens at every school, which is every once in a while, someone's away from a phone. Is there anything that we can do to actually get more people issued Narcan? I'm thinking like at Rancho, you have several offices, right? You could have the different assistant principals, their office, they could have a Narcan there, and maybe, you know, there's not much training to do with this Narcan, you know? I mean, we had to watch those videos anyhow.
Right.
A few seconds, you know, a few minutes difference will make, it would make a difference. What can we do to relax us a little bit, to get more Narcans? And I hate to ask this question, but it's a reality. It's already touched our community, and I, you're talking to a guy that drives around in a truck with a Narcan in it because you just never know.
Right.
Could you, could you look into that for us?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's it. I think I had another question, but I, I'll have to, I'll have to go ahead and rewind here. Councilman Black, do you have anything?
No, sir. No, I'm fine.
Are there any other questions, I think, maybe from the, from staff?
Thank you, Councilman. I think there are a couple questions, and I'm not sure if they'll have the answers now. I know that we've had, staff has had some experience both in PD and in our parks over at J.D. Smith, where we've had students that have been truant, and they've, they've, you know, they'll be in the parks and they'll approach our staff, and our staff will have to contact PD. And one of the things that the kids like to say is they have kind of a, apparently, they're fairly proficient at math because they like to say, you know, how many days consecutively that they've been truant? And it seems that there's a disconnect. I'm not really sure how we are able to, who we should contact, or how we're able to help because we've got these kids, and I spent the day last month with our, with one of our crews in parks, and it was, you know, a great day minus cleaning the toilets. I didn't like that very much. But spent the day with them, and one of the things that they were saying is that they would see, you know, just drug transactions happening across, you know, the fence, and some of these kids were clearly truant, but it seemed like no one really was doing anything about it. So I don't know, and in talking with PD, there seems to be, you know, some issues that they're facing also. So I think that would be one question that I would have in regards to truancy, and what's the best way for us to deal with that, or if we could have an understanding of truancy data on our kids in North Las Vegas. Another thing, too, is I, there are, and I've expressed this to Dr. Jara several times. We communicate regularly, that there are times I wake up in the morning that I am thankful I'm not him. I appreciate the challenges that he has and that you guys have. I completely understand and appreciate. I think that one of the challenges we face in the city of North Las Vegas is being able to hire people. It is a challenge as you confronting the silver tsunami happening nationally as people retire, as the baby boomer, large, you know, this large workforce population is leaving the workforce at the same time that we're trying to bring on new folks. So I understand and appreciate the challenge in bringing on teachers. I know that that was something that, regionally, as we've had discussions throughout the pandemic together, and as we've worked with CCSD and others, we, you know, have been acutely aware of how many teachers it takes to open a school and to operate the district. One of the concerns that I have in particular is, as we're trying to attract new teachers with incentives and other things like that, it has been our experience in the city that a lot of our schools have newer teachers. And our schools are a lot of places where they'll, they'll have substitutes first, and people, once they have a certain amount of time, they'll go out to schools in the suburbs and other places. And so not only is that a challenge because it is, it represents a significant decrease in funding to schools within the- to schools within the city of North Las Vegas, because you have schools that are outside of the city that have a higher payroll, which is a large expense. And so I get that, but I'm just concerned that in the efforts that CCSD has in trying to attract teachers, and especially as we're turning to creative means, that we're going to end up with a lot of our unlicensed and inexperienced teachers in our inner city.
To your, Mr. City Manager, I think, and for Ms. Triana, just to his point, yeah, I've been at Rancho for 27 years, and I've lost count of all the colleagues that, you know, they're young, hey, sometimes, just because you're a new teacher doesn't mean that you're a bad teacher. Sometimes they're very energetic, even if they're like, you know, older and coming into the profession, even after they've had a new, a whole career, right? They bring a lot of energy, a lot of, and they learn quick. But the bad thing is, as you said, as soon as they get good, they're out because they're traveling in from Henderson, they're traveling in from the far southwest, it's a 30, 45-minute drive. And in part, I can't blame my colleagues for leaving because if you have to drive for 45 minutes, that's an hour and a half that you get back in your life if you find, if you find a job at a school right down, right around the corner from you. So I really can't blame them. But something that was really effective, I think, was back in the, I've been doing this for a long time, back in the 90s, if you taught at a school that was a Title I school or a high need school, you got an extra 20th of a year-
Yes, sir.
-in purse. And I got five of those, so I hate to say this, I'll be marching out a year early. And believe me, I'm really happy that, and I'm really grateful that the school district incentivized that. So if there's any way to, you know, to get creative and bring back a program like that, that'd be fantastic, you know? I just, I know, we don't do it for the money, but at the end of the day, a little bit of compensation-
Yes.
-always, you know, when you're heading home, you know, it makes you feel just a little bit better when you know you can pay your bills, you know?
And we would appreciate your partnership in communicating that out with that purse incentive. I know, I, you know, I know a lot of people, including myself as a teacher, back in the day, as well as loan forgiveness, that was also a big-
That's a fantastic one, too, yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't get to control those things, but as partners, I think if we keep voicing that together on what we can do to attract people, I think that can send a message.
Well, we do have friends in legislature and in the state senate, so maybe that's something we definitely need to communicate to them. One other thing-
Is this recorded?
No, of course it is, you know, and of course, you know, they're only a phone call away.
Yes, sir.
I will say, getting back also to the truancy, I did have some of my staff at Neighborhood Recreation Center, because they were worried because they see, you know, they're obviously like high school age, maybe in middle school age. And when they called CCSD police, they were told, quote, "We don't do truancy." And then before they can do, say anything else, they got handed off to Rancho High School. So we have contacted, you know, I have talked to Director Calvo about this. So he's going to work through our person that we have, not on patrol, but maybe have what Junior, Junior Mendez, work with his counterpart there at CCSD to figure out something that they can do together, you know? They do have jurisdiction, the school police. I'm not an attorney, but if I remember correctly, according to state statute, they have, school police has jurisdiction for any school student to and from school during the school hours. So I think they most, again, I'm not a professional on this one. I only play a lawyer on TV, but I'm pretty sure that they actually do have jurisdiction. So maybe, you know, I don't know if you need to also talk to school police-
Yes, sir.
-but maybe a gentle, you know, conversation with-
Absolutely. And I think especially, I mean, if you think you see a drug transaction going down, that's definitely warranting a call to the police.
The big thing is, you know, it's all about safety, you know? And with everything that's going on right now, they don't need to be in the parks. We hope to drive them back to school where we'll have, you know, dedicated and, you know, loving professionals like myself to look after them, right? So almost definitely anything you could do to talk to school police on that. And again, I do think, you know, kids in a park or kids in a party house, I do believe one of my colleagues, Mr. Ruben de Silva, he commented to me that when he was a senior, I guess they were doing a ditch party at someone's house, and someone, the neighbors called the police. And sure enough, school police did arrive and took a few people, you know, to a different location, so to speak. So I think that's out there, and I get it, everyone's overstretched, you know? Our friends, you know, our colleagues, everyone's overstretched, but it is safety. So anything that we can do, you know, is definitely very appreciated. I think now, I think I've said enough. If anyone else wants to say something?
No, I think we're fine. I think you covered it all. Rowan, thank you so much for speaking with us here tonight, taking your time. And I want to thank councilmen and city manager for bringing out, so those are very important points, particularly the truancy issue.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing that, that was just the presentation. We don't have to do any motions on that. Okay. Item number 14.
Item number, item number 14, received presentation from Nevada Department of Transportation, Deputy Director Cole Mortensen. Director Christina Swallow will be making the presentation tonight in lieu of Director Cole Mortensen, but I think Kami Dempsey's here, too. Oh, yeah, there's Kami, so I saw, did see Kami.
Hi, good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Swallow, for attending tonight.
Thank you for having me. It's great to be here, and it's great to talk about what we're doing to make sure that we have the appropriate resources to make sure that our Nevada roads keep working for everyone in Nevada, and particularly in the city of North Las Vegas. All right, so what I'm going to talk about today is our funding situation. I'm going to follow that up with a little bit about our transport, Sustainable Transportation Funding Study Advisory Working Group, the guiding revenue principles by which we'll measure any revenue suggestions, and then the next steps. But first, like I said, we're going to talk about the situation. So our population's growing. We're one of the blessed states and communities that has a rapidly growing population, and that's fantastic. Unfortunately, though, we're driving more than we're growing. So as you think about it, our community is growing, and where it's growing, it's growing on the outskirts. There is some in, you know, redevelopment in the middle, but mostly it's on the outskirts. So every new person is having to drive more than somebody who lived in more of the inner parts of our community. And our construction costs are going up. And so we're just not keeping pace with the demands and the needs in terms of our revenue to meet the needs of our community. So gas tax remains the largest single source of transportation funding in Nevada. I should note that the circles that you see on there, those are the state highway fund, not, they don't reflect the federal, federal's predominantly gas tax, but they've started backfilling that with some general fund. The state fund is all user fees of some sort or another. It's fuel taxes, it's taxes on your registration, it's GST, but it's predominantly fuel taxes. And that's the same for the counties. The counties are fuel taxes and GST, some taxes on registration, and neither is keeping pace. So this chart just shows the bottom line. The green line shows how the VMT, the miles that are being traveled by our community, is really just outpacing that fuel tax revenue. That last little dip on the top line on the red is reflection of 2020, and we have come back a bit, but we still aren't at 2019 levels. So we would have continued growing, as you see, and in fact, we have not. So we're still catching up from the pandemic, and in reality, the lines just are, our green is outpacing the red, even if we didn't have the dip. And the other part of this is you would think, well, people are driving more, so of course you should be getting more revenue. It shouldn't really matter, except for the fact that our vehicles are increasingly more fuel efficient, there's more EVs on the road. The EVs aren't the threat today as much as they are the threat tomorrow. It's really the increased fuel efficiency of the vehicles. And I like to share that one of the vehicles that we have in my household is a '93 Ford Bronco, and it gets nine miles to the gallon, I think it was recently told. We try to fill that as little as possible and drive on the other vehicle that gets more like 26 to 28 miles per gallon. But you can think about that. If the vehicles of before had a lower fuel efficiency, we were collecting for every mile they drove, like one and a quarter cents per mile. Now we're only collecting little over a cent per mile, and so it just doesn't go as far. That doesn't even account for inflation and how much our construction costs have increased. All right, so let's talk about where we're going with this. In 2019, the legislature recognized a few things. They recognized that they actually established a statewide climate goal, climate plan, and they were like, if we're going to do this, and that means we're probably going to have more EVs because transportation is the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in the state, we're going to have more EVs if we're going to achieve the goals, how are we going to pay for our system? Right now, EVs don't pay anything. So we need to look at this. So SCR3 established an interim committee. We looked at it, we realized at the end of 2020 that we needed to do some more work. So the legislature tasked Endot with assembling an advisory working group to really look at the funding needs and make some sustainable funding recommendations. On the committee, we took that legislative language, that bill language, and we basically created a charge, and that's what you see on the screen. The blue are taken, the blue words are taken straight out of the bill. We need to look at the sustainable funding of the state highway fund, so we're limited to the state highway fund. We need to look at at least two transportation funding alternatives, that interim committee did after SCR3. We need to look at multimodal transportation and recognize that the system needs to work for everybody, not just for drivers, because a large portion of our population can't drive for various reasons. We need to think about social equity and user equity, and we need to think about our climate goals, that greenhouse gas emissions piece. And finally, we need to really be considering, if we want it to be sustainable, we need to think about the role that land use and smart growth strategies have in ensuring that it's sustainable. The way our communities are growing right now, we're constantly going to be chasing it because that VMT is always going to outpace our population growth. So they also tasked us with, in convening this group, they actually told us who needed to be on the group, or what types of people needed to be on the group, or representation. We have a very diverse group. Obviously, we have the MPOs, so MJ Maynard of the RTC, she's one of our members. We have energy, we have tax experts, we have the chambers, urban, Latin, and Las Vegas Chamber. We have organized labor. We have representatives from the League of Cities and NACO. And I should say, the representative from the League of Cities is actually, the city of Las Vegas is traffic engineer, so somebody who is like knows our community down here. So lots of different voices to make sure that, and Nevada Resort Association, to make sure that we're hearing where the pitfalls might be, where the opportunities might be, because we want to make recommendations that are as viable as possible. In the end, our report gets delivered to the legislature at the end of this year, and we're hoping that they will take those up. And so that's why we have this diverse committee, because we're hoping that there'll be something that's palatable for action. We started meeting, as I mentioned, the bill was last legislative session in 2021, and we were ready to go when the session ended, and we started our first, we selected our committee members in June, we had our first meeting in July, and we've been meeting basically every month since. There's been a couple of skip months, and when we've skipped, it's been because the team, our consulting team, needed to go back, do some work, do some analytics to provide the additional information to the advisory working group based on feedback that they'd heard at the previous meeting. And so I think when we first got together, I think almost everyone on the advisory working group thought that there might be some magic solution. We're just going to do this one thing, and it's going to fix it. And we quickly figured out, it's not going to be one thing. It is going to be a combination of things. You know, when you're trying to balance all of those guidelines that the legislature gave us, how do you do that? And how do you decide if this is better than that? Because you can certainly generate the same amount of revenue in two or four or 10 different ways, but how do you, how do you balance those? And how do you make sure that they're achieving the goals? So we established some guiding principles. And you can see there's seven there. We've actually split out the last one into two because they're sort of different. So the first one is financial sustainability. We know the gas tax is not sustainable. But we also know whatever we might replace, the gas tax might, it may be sustainable, but it may not, the next one, be sufficient today. Gas tax could be sufficient today, fill our hole, and I didn't actually tell you how big our hole is. Our hole is about 60% of my capital program. Capital program's between 700 and 800 million a year, and I'm short by over 500 million a year. So it's significant, the short, and so we need to make sure that we can fill that hole today. The hole's only going to get bigger moving forward. So we're looking at, is it sustainable and will it meet our sufficiency requirements? User equity, EVs pay nothing, Ford Bronco pays, gets nine miles to the gallon, so user equity, we're really making sure everybody pays. Social equity, if you have the capacity to buy a new car, you're paying less to drive on the road than somebody who is unable to buy a new car and has an older, less fuel, yes, less fuel efficient vehicle. Flexibility, when we start talking about, can we build EV charging stations? Can we build, can we support transit? Can we build off-system bicycle facilities? Like, all of those things are questions about whether or not we actually can build them with our current sources, and we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to do it to meet the needs of the transportation system broadly. Greenhouse gas emissions, I talked a little bit about that, and pretty clear, you know, was the system, is the funding revenue mechanism going to help support achieving the goals or maybe draw away from achieving the goals? And then transparency and efficiency and ease of compliance. You might have something that's very transparent and hard to implement, or you might have something that's really easy to implement and not transparent at all. So we're looking at those as sort of two separate options. And the consultant has created like fuel gauges, red, yellow, and green, to kind of show how every mechanism that we've considered measures up against these eight different guiding principles, so that we, because no mechanism is perfect. And so how do you balance those? How do you weigh them against each other? So what are we looking at? 25 different options were put on the table, and we looked broadly across the nation. What are other people doing? What are they thinking? Because in Nevada, our funding mechanisms are very limited, and it's one of the most limited in terms of funding mechanisms across the nation. So we looked broadly. What are others doing? How are they generating revenue? Brought this to the team, the advisory working group in January, and the consulting team failed to manage my expectations very well on this because they said, well, at the January meeting, we're going to be narrowing down the options. And the only thing that we were incapable of doing at the January meeting was removing the payroll tax. And I said to the team, I thought we were going to be narrowing down, because they've done this a few times, and they're like, it's fine, it's good. Because we had very robust conversation about the other mechanisms, so they could hear from all of those 29 members where they were concerned, where there were things that they thought we should explore further. Skipped February, had our March meeting last week, and we did actually narrow down for further consideration. I'm not sure that any of those that we've struck and out, and I'll tell you in a second what those are, are permanently off the table, but the ones that advanced, so 10 out of the 25 had advanced, and those are ones that the committee is interested in looking and getting more information about. How might it work? What might it cost? How could we, how could we layer these together to achieve our package? And that's what we're going to be talking about in April. So for your awareness, last week when we had our meetings, and our meetings, so that you know, our public meetings, we hear public comment, we can receive written public comment as well, so we're interested in hearing feedback. But the 10 that are advancing to the April meeting are increasing the rate of the flat per gallon excise tax. For the record, that hasn't been increased since the early 90s. It was increased, I think, one year within the federal gas tax. So I mean, we're talking a long time ago, and costs have certainly gone up a lot since then. Adding an inflation index to the rest of the state right now. Clark has one, we get some of that. Washoe has some, we get none of it. And the rest of the other 15 don't do anything. So indexing the rest of the state. Vehicle fees, increasing the basic license fee, increasing the GST. Usage-based fees, adding a distant base charge for light duty vehicles. So basically, everybody pays the same one or two cents per mile. If you use the road, it's the same, like if you turn on your faucet, everybody pays the same for the faucet, same thing as the road. If you use the road, you pay the same amount. So looking at that, that's more of a longer term solution because it has been implemented in Utah, it's been piloted in about 15 other states over the last 15 or so years. So it's maturity, it's getting there, but there's not that many cars on the road. Utah's only done it really with their alternative fuel vehicles, so how do we phase that in? And then the other, and the other category, the ones that have survived parcel delivery fees, I believe Colorado has implemented this. This might make sure that I always check that box, receive on Friday, and fewer boxes and fewer shipments, right? So it would be, I don't know, 50 cents a dollar. We got to figure that out if we were to implement that per delivery. Ride share surcharges, we already have these, but maybe a little bit more. A carbon tax, the question on the carbon taxes, is this appropriate for transportation? Is it appropriate for something else? How would we do it? It's still a lot of learning to do on that. Street utility fee and land use impact fees, things that are done at the local level, but perhaps they could be done at the statewide level. So we're learning a little bit more in April. And then as we get into the next steps, April, I already told you what we're doing. June, we're looking to have our preliminary recommendations pretty much wrapped up. Our report is due at the end of the year in December, and we'll probably have to convene or at least do some sort of virtual okaying of the final document because all the AWG members will be signatory to it, so we want to make sure that they feel comfortable with it. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
That was very informative, and, you know, a little mind boggling. I'm sure the people that are watching this at home see all those potential taxes, making them very happy out there. Clearly, I could see getting more pinces on the road would probably solve all the problems for us. But let me turn it over to my council members over here. Councilman Barone?
Yeah, thank you very much. I had the pleasure of actually literally having a chair next to Director Swallow here at RTC, and so, yeah, I do remember your presentation. But, you know, not so much a question, more like a comment. A lot of our services, a lot of transportation services, RTC, where they're under the same challenges, of course, that the state are, to still provide services, and at the same time are challenged by numerous shifts in the economy. For instance, you know, as our vehicles are getting more efficient, people are pay, they have to buy less gas, which is a good thing, it's a good thing for the environment, the only problem is, you have less money to go ahead and operate the RTC, which is, of course, vitally important for the city of Las Vegas, with so many of our residents who depend upon the RTC to provide for their families. You know, my mom and dad, they used the really horrible old Las Vegas transit system, it was what it was, if those of you who have been living here long enough know how crappy that was. The RTC, you know, even CAT was like decades ahead of that. So these are just realities, you know, we don't like the idea of having to pay, but someone has to pay for these roads, and we're talking about the lifeblood to our community. And so I'll be very happy to see as creative as we can get, you know, I saw taxes on, taxes on batteries. Did that mean, by the way, the, the batteries start my pickup truck, or are we talking about like the EV batteries?
It could be either, it was, it was really the concept of how do we, how do we tax parts, right? And it could be EV batteries, it could be the battery on yours, it could, I think tires might have been on there, it's.
Yeah, tires was, 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 well, I, I kind of like that, that idea, because it's, it's a little bit progressive, because if it's, you know, like, you know, people who buy really fancy vehicles, the really big ones, they're kind of heavier, you might have to pay a little bit more, but on the other hand, your heavier vehicle is probably doing more damage to the road. So it kind, you know, and if you, if you have a little tiny car, a little smart car, right, with, it weighs like 50 pounds, you know, you can put in your back pocket, well, maybe you should be paying a little bit less because you're putting less, you know, impact on, on, on the road. So, yeah, I would be very, I'd be very happy to see what we're going to do. Again, I'm hoping that there are going to be progressive taxes, you know, instead of regressive ones, only because there are people here in the city of Las Vegas, you know, for them, now with, with gas, you know, going north of five bucks a gallon here, with the Putin taxes, I guess, you know, any, any dollar that they can save, you know, is another dollar they can put towards their housing or, you know, anything else they have to do. So thank you so very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Black?
Yes, thank you. Your presentation was super easy to follow, very thorough, and just the plan itself is well thought out, and I really appreciate that. I was, you know, introduced to this way of thinking in 10 minutes, and I have a fair understanding of what you're trying to do, and I think it's great. Two questions. One, I'm intrigued by usage-based fees, particularly the distance-based charge, you said that there are 15 states that have piloted that. How do you quantify, validate, and collect from a driver in that regard? Is it voluntary? How do you know the mileage? Is it self-reporting?
So that is, that, that's exactly one of the things we need to look at. So I, when Oregon first piloted it, and I think they were the first Oregon, first state to pilot it, they actually, it was, it was a volunteer opt-in program, and I think it was almost all fuel vehicles at that time, and it was an OB, it was a thing that you plugged into your OBD chip, and it actually communicated with the gas pumps, and so it reduced the tax from the gas pump, and then you paid instead, like, it was, it was a super smart, but tech version. Utah is doing, also, it's an opt-in with their EVs, you either pay a flat fee for your EV, or you can opt-in and be guaranteed less than your flat fee. And I think, I'm not positive, though, I think there, that's a registration-based, I believe, but I'm not entirely sure. So there's a, there's a few different ways of looking at doing it, that's one of the reasons why I said the sufficiency piece, because it's, we've, we've got to decide what our plan will be. It does provide a little more flexibility if we wanted to, to really, to drive towards perhaps greenhouse gas emission goals, and that maybe you could charge differently based on the fuel efficiency of the vehicle. That one has a little bit more work to do, but it is, it is something that a great number of states are looking at. The USDOT has, and several of the last infrastructure bills have, or transportation infrastructure bills have included pilot funding for it, so it is something, it is a direction that many states are looking at as well as the nation.
Thank you. No, I think, obviously, we need a comprehensive plan that captures as many road users as possible, regardless of the type of vehicle, but I think as the vehicles become newer and older, you know, ODB1 versus the OBD2 vehicles go away, it'll be a lot easier to use the tech, leverage the technology to do that. Thank you. And then I haven't really studied this, but from an infrastructure, federal infrastructure bill standpoint, do we stand to receive revenue that can be utilized in your department? And if so, how are you contemplating the utilization of those dollars?
Yeah, so the infrastructure bill that was just passed actually does provide, it's roughly a 20% increase in our federal funding, a 10% increase in our overall funding, so it is providing an increase, we're excited about that, but as you, as we all know, inflation's bad right now.
It's being chewed up one-time dollars?
So, right, so it's regular programmatic funding, but with a boost, and we're, and there are a couple of programs in there that are new that we're excited about, which boosted a little bit further, there's a bridge program, we have the best bridges in the nation, so we get the least amount of bridge funding. I'm, I think I'm actually okay with that, because I don't want to be closing bridges, right? And then there's some EV funding that is completely new and extra, but we're, we're working on balancing and working to prioritize. But I think the nature of your question, though, and Councilman Barone, that the concept of, if we don't raise the revenue, I have 5,400 miles, centerline miles, 14,000 miles of lane miles, that carry 50% of the vehicles in the state, 70% of the heavy traffic, I need to make sure that network remains in good condition, and so if we don't figure out a way to generate the revenue, it's going to be really hard for me to start doing the new stuff, when we need a new interchange, when we need to add a lane on I-15. I'm going to have to preserve the existing assets, and so that's why it's really critical we come together as a state, all of the agencies together, to really figure out how do we, how do we find the revenue we need.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Just one question, the ones that you said are not moving forward, will there be a time to revisit those, or is this a trial to, for the 10 that are, a time to see how effective they're going to be, or will there be a need?
So I think, I never know what's going to happen at these meetings, right? There's 28 people other than me on this committee, and so I don't really know. What I know is we narrowed down to those 10, and in April, we're going to talk about those 10. Now, it's possible that a member of the group might say, it's really important we bring this other one back, and that, and we might talk through that and figure out how it might blend into a package. In the end, though, we're providing recommendations to the legislature, and the legislature's going to advance, you know, yes, so anything, anything could come back.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think payroll tax will come back, though. It could.
Well, your presentation was very informative and very educating and very candid, you know, so I guess it's going to be up to the legislature to really make a decision based on your recommendations, if we get anything back at all. But we will get something back.
I, I, I hope we do, and I, you know, it's going to be up to the legislature, but I like to think about it, it's going to be up to all of us. I mean, all hands on deck to get this through, yeah, they're representing us.
Right.
And so it's important that not just the 29 members of this group are telling the story, but every single one of us is telling the story about how critically important this infrastructure is to the economic development of our communities.
Right, absolutely. Again, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for having me this evening.
My pleasure. All right. Moving on.
Item number 15, pass and adopt ordinance number 3108 that amends Title 12 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 12.16 in order to update sections pertaining to rules and regulations applicable to city parks, recreation facilities, and trails, and to provide other matters properly related thereto.
Is anybody going to speak for this, Mr. City Manager? No? Okay.
No, sir, Mayor Protim, unless there's any questions that.
Okay, do we have any questions, Council? Okay, all right, they're now ready to accept the motion on this item, if you so choose.
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion? Thank you. Okay, city managers report?
Mayor Protim and Council, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving on to the end of this, this meeting, which is really very brief but very informative at the same time. Now the time for the public to speak on issues that were not on the agenda tonight, but that are within the jurisdiction or control of the city council. Speakers, once again, are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during this second forum may be deliberated or acted upon by the city council. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or other city staff for